Please call this meeting to order with a roll call.
President Demos.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Kenwood.
Here.
Trustee Laticek.
Here.
Trustee O'Shea.
Here.
Trustee Sannick.
Here.
And after four years, I will lead the board in question. (inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is audience participation. First, we would like to have a proclamation in recognition of 2017 National Police Week. If Clerk Galvin could please read this proclamation into the record.
Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Glen Allen Police Department, and whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, and whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and whereas the Glen Allen Police Department has grown to be a modern and technological law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, and whereas the members of Glen Allen Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and in doing so have established an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all of our residents. Now therefore, I, Alexander W. Demos, President of the Village of Glen Allen, Illinois, on behalf of the Village Board, do hereby declare the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week and urge all Glen Allen citizens to join in commemorating the service of law enforcement officers in our community.
If Police Chief Norton could please accept the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause).
You were standing up clapping hoping you wouldn't speak.
Well, you got your wish fulfilled.
There you go.
For now.
Thank you. The next item of the meeting is open. This is an opportunity where you can speak about any item that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Catherine, do we have one person that's signed up so far?
Yes, we have Mr. Tim Brinker.
My name is Tim Brinker. I live at 421 Hillside, and we've been residents for about 30 years. Both of us have been teachers in the community. We chose Glen Allen for its village feel and its great schools. We bought a small home here and we've added on since then. One thing we did not change to the house was the front look of the house, particularly the large front porch. And we have two special needs children, and that porch is a way that they communicate with the rest of the neighborhood safely, staying on the porch and being able to interact. We have found recently, though, that one of our posts is sinking, and it's part of the main roof structure, so the roof itself is buckling and pulling away from the other part of the roof. So we want to just fix the safety issue and keep our house intact, not changing or adding anything. The one we put in for a permit, it was denied because the setback has changed since the porch was built when it was original to the house. And we looked into variation, but the cost is high, the time is long, and there's no guarantee of even being approved once you go through all of that. And we were told there were no exceptions whatsoever. To me, it seems like there should be a little flexibility to that zoning, that there should be some exceptions in the case of a safety type of issue. And so, especially with a village or a community like Glen Allen, I would hope it would be a little more people-centered and flexible in that way. So I'd like to request the Village Board help us get a permit exception to fix a safety concern on our property.
Thank you. Manager Franz, you'll reach out accordingly.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up, Catherine?
No, there is none.
Is there?
I'm sorry.
Sure.
I didn't sign it.
Wonderful. We're going to need your name and address.
Your parking sticker.
Make sure we set the three-minute clock.
So I wanted to be here tonight because four years ago, I was sworn in with President Demos, Trustee O'Shea, Trustee Clark, and ...
Glad to see that.
With all of you, and Clerk Galvin. And I'm here tonight just simply to say thank you. A lot has passed in four years, although I will note that we joined the Board under circumstances that may seem familiar today. The night we were sworn in, just a week before the previous Village Board had held a meeting that went into the wee hours of the morning to try and finish off a very controversial development project before we took our seats. Not because they were trying to cram something through as a lame-duck Board, but because they thought it was the right thing to do to finish off a project without saddling a new Board on a project that had so much history behind it. Much has passed since that, but I just want to again say thank you because I think that you as a Board, those of you departing tonight, really embody the volunteer spirit that has made Glen Allen great. For the last four years, you have shown up constantly at meetings, and I don't think most of the people in the audience or at home understand exactly what that means, but it's multiple nights every week, not just at Village Board meetings, but at workshops, attending commission meetings, and a lot of other community events. You haven't just shown up when it's an issue that impacts your house or your neighborhood or your street or your immediate neighbors. You've been here every week. You haven't just shown up when something is interesting or important on the agenda. You've been here for all the really, really mundane things. Budget meetings that go well past midnight, arguments over salt storage, and renovations at a restaurant. The little things that frankly, most of the people in this village don't pay attention to, but make a big difference in the way this community operates. That's the definition of service. And I doubt that there's anyone in the village that has agreed with every decision you as a Board have made. I know I don't, but I think we all have to respect the service that you have embodied and this village is a much better place for that service. Tim O'Shea, I want to thank you for the financial and the business acumen you've brought to this Board. You have much to show for it. I know I've learned a lot from serving with you. We have, I think, an improved Village Links, an improved restaurant, and improved Recreation Department thanks to your hard work. Dean Clark, you brought with us a wealth of experience from previous Boards and a wealth of knowledge from a life in Glen Allen. I learned a lot from you. Thank you very much. Diane McGinley, tireless commitment to cost savings, including endless conversations over where we should be buying work gloves and work boots. And I know that the pedestrians of Glen Allen will be much safer over the next four years because of your commitment to making sure that we have good pavers. And last, President Demos, the captain of our ship for the last four years and someone that I've really been honored to serve with. Thank you. Glen Allen is, as I think this is the third time I've said this, a much better place for your service. During the last four years, you've revised our budget year, bringing us to a calendar budget year, which has a significant impact of allowing the Board to create a budget before deciding what its tax levy needs to be. A fundamental decision that has allowed us on this Board to freeze the tax levy for the last several years and to really, really save the citizens of this town a considerable amount of money. Budgeting from the bottom up, something that was implemented during your tenure and again has recognized real savings for the village. Putting the, changing the formula for funding the fire department and creating a roadmap for funding the fire department going forward when it became clear that the donations that this village had received in the past were no longer going to cut it. And finally, moving the police station out into a first-class facility where it'll be going shortly and getting it out of this situation here downstairs where badly needed to go. All of this under your leadership and for that, I thank you and I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.[617.82][617.82](applause). Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Thank you. We'll move on to item E, the consent agenda. Would any trustees like to remove any item from tonight's consent agenda for individual consideration? Manager Franz, if you would read the consent agenda into the record.
Yes, we will be considering the following items, including payroll and vouchers totaling And these are items as follows. April 10th, regular Village Board meeting minutes. April 17th, regular Village Board workshop minutes. April 24th, regular Village Board meeting minutes. Told vouchers already covered, and item five is ordinance number 6502, an ordinance approving a variation from the rear yard setback requirements of the zoning code to allow the construction of an addition on the property located at 869 Hillside Avenue.
Wonderful. Are there any questions, any trustee questions on any consent agenda item? Are there any public questions on any consent agenda item? May I have a motion, please?
Has that ever happened where nobody had a question?
It has.
Wow. Okay. Residents, Mr. President, trustees, staff, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following items, including payroll and vouchers totaling $1,371,484.58 and items one through five.
Second. First and second. Any further deliberations? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Laticek.
Yes.
Trustee McGinley.
Aye.
Trustee O'Shea.
Aye.
Trustee Sannick.
Aye.
Wonderful. Consent agenda's completed. Now we get into the meat of the agenda here for the purpose that we're here, and that is item F, Village Board and Library Board Transition Activities. So first, we have Village President Alexander Demos, Trustee Dean Clark, and Trustee Tim O'Shea, and Village Clerk Catherine Galvin are finishing a four-year term of office. Village or manager Franz will present proclamations for outgoing Village Clerk Catherine Galvin and Village Trustees Dean Clark and Tim O'Shea.
Thank you. First, we have a proclamation honoring Catherine Galvin for her service, for years of service as Village Clerk. Whereas Catherine Galvin has served the Village of Glen Allen as its elected Village Clerk since May 13th, 2013, and whereas Catherine's four years as Village Clerk fulfills her public service commitment as set forth by the voters of Glen Allen. And whereas during Catherine's term of office, Glen Allen remained a leader in DuPage County and in the Chicago metropolitan area in its efforts to provide services and maintain a high quality of living for its residents. Whereas Catherine has served the village with dedication and commitment to a high standard of public service, and her personal dedication to the highest professional ideals and standards has earned her the respect and admiration of the citizens and municipal employees who have worked with her. And whereas Catherine's dedication to the well-being of Glen Allen, to Glen Allen residents, has been demonstrated as she has attended and taken minutes of approximately 250 night Village meetings and workshops. And whereas Catherine will be remembered for her skill for work on the shot clock that was installed during her tenure. Do you want to hit the buzzer one last time, Catherine? No, it's fine. Now therefore, on behalf of President Alex Demos, we do convey the appreciation of the Village Board and the residents of Glen Allen for Village Clerk Catherine Galvin's commitment to responsive government in our village, and we extend to her our fond wishes for her future endeavors.[860.00][860.00](applause).
Yes, sir.
All right. Proclamation honoring Dean Clark for his years of service on the Board of Trustees of the Village of Glen Allen. Whereas Dean Clark has served as Village Trustee since May 13th, 2013, and whereas Dean has served as trustee liaison to the Plan Commission and the Glenbard Wastewater Authority Executive Oversight Committee at the Glenbard Wastewater Authority and various other fill-ins as his time allowed. Whereas serving a term on the Village Board requires many hours of reading, researching, studying, and attending approximately 250 meetings. And whereas Dean's four years as trustee fulfills his public service commitment as set forth by the voters of Glen Allen. And whereas during Dean's term of office, Glen Allen remained a leader in the DuPage County and in the Chicago metropolitan area in its efforts to provide services and maintain a high quality of living for its residents. And whereas Dean has served the village with dedication and commitment to a high standard of public service, and his personal dedication to the highest professional ideals and standards has earned him the respect and admiration of the citizens and municipal employees who have worked with him. And whereas Trustee Clark successfully helped the village in securing a AAA bond rating while keeping property taxes flat for the past three years, and whereas Trustee Clark provided assistance in the advancement of a number of capital improvement projects, including the new police station, the Lake Ellen Stormwater Project, and the Crescent Boulevard Roundabout Project. During his term, the Village Board annexed a portion of the Glen Allen Country Club, Amber Ridge Subdivision, and the Enclave Subdivision, as well as 150 residential properties in the southeast part of the village in 2015. And whereas Dean will be remembered for setting a new record for reviewing vouchers for the village as trustee and for GWA for all four years of his term, making him voucher king of the village. We'll get you a badge or something.
Is there money with it?
I don't know about that yet. Now therefore, on behalf of Alex Demos, President of the Village of Glen Allen, do convey the appreciation of the Village Board and the residents of Glen Allen for the dedication, good humor, and quiet effectiveness of Dean Clark, Village Trustees, for his many hours of tireless service, immeasurable contributions, which have kept Glen Allen a beautiful, safe, and vibrant community. Thanks for your service.[1040.16][1040.16](applause).
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Proclamation honoring Tim O'Shea for his years of service on the Board of Trustees of the Village of Glen Allen. That's true, I didn't. May I continue?
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Whereas Tim O'Shea has served as Village Trustee since May 13th, 2013, and whereas Tim has served as trustee liaison to the Recreation Commission and Finance Commission for four years. And whereas serving a term on the Village Board requires many hours of reading, researching, studying, and attending approximately 250 meetings. And whereas during Tim's term of office, Glen Allen remained a leader in the DuPage County and in the Chicago metropolitan area in its efforts to provide services and maintain a high quality of life for its residents. And whereas Tim has served the village with dedication and commitment to a high standard of public service, and his personal dedication to the highest professional ideas and standards has earned him the respect and admiration of the citizens and municipal employees who have worked with him. Whereas Trustee O'Shea successfully helped the village in securing a AAA bond rating while keeping property taxes flat for the past three years. Whereas Trustee O'Shea provided exceptional leadership in the advancement of a number of capital improvement projects for the village, including the new police station, Lake Ellen Stormwater Project, and the Crescent Boulevard Roundabout Project. During his term, the Village Board annexed a portion of the Glen Allen Country Club, Amber Ridge Subdivision, and the Enclave Subdivision, as well as 150 residential properties in the southeast part of the village in 2015. And whereas Tim's four years as trustee fulfills his public service commitment as set forth by the voters of Glen Allen. And whereas Tim will be remembered for setting a new record of meetings attended without the fit and proper necktie attire.[1169.58][1169.58](laughter) As he's donating again tonight. Yes.
Following the President.
Always looking well, always looking well. Whereas the village appreciates Tim's donation of rotating fans, probably displayed right here, and he will be remembered finally on hot summer Board meeting nights, so thank you for that donation. Now therefore, on behalf of Alex Demos, President of the Village of Glen Allen, do convey the appreciation of the Village Board and the residents of Glen Allen for the dedication, good humor, and quiet effectiveness of Tim O'Shea, Village Trustee, and for his many hours of tireless service and immeasurable contributions which have, which have, which helped keep Glen Allen a beautiful, safe, and vibrant community. Thank you, Tim.[1213.01][1213.01](applause).
We're going to pop down to item three and allow the outgoing trustees and Clerk Galvin to make some comments. I'd like to start with Clerk Galvin. Although we are going to respect the three-minute rule here.
It's been four years. I would suggest y'all get comfortable. I'm just kidding. I just want to say thank you to the residents of Glen Allen for electing me to the position of Village Clerk four long, short years ago. These past few months, we've had a flurry of activity with regards to 825 North Main Street, and I just want to remind everyone that all the boards have hotbed issues, as former trustee Elliot had already mentioned. Ours were definitely 825 North Main, the Self Project, the Science Wing addition, and Glenbard West. A week before we were sworn in, the prior Board met till after 1:00 a.m. to approve the subdivision across from Glencrest Middle School. And who can forget the lights-up memorial field issue? Now, no one seems to know what a Village Clerk does, and at times I was convinced that staff, trustees, and the Village President were kind of clueless about that as well. And rest assured, while I didn't have much of a voice unless President Demos was telling me what to do, like turn on the clock or read the roll call, I have to tell you, I did relive every meeting approximately three times. I attended the meeting, trying to sleep after the meeting, it would kind of play over and over in my head, and then again when I wrote the minutes to all the meetings. And while I might have mispronounced some of your names or forgot to start the clock, trust me that it was very important for me to tell your story and what led you to speak at a Village Board meeting for the minutes. And given the passion and enthusiasm I encountered from the citizens at our meetings over the last four years, I'm imploring all of you to stay involved. One resident over our recent deliberations about 825 North Main Street threatened that the next Village elections will have severe consequences. I'm encouraging all of you to be those consequences and to jump off that high dive, to get involved, to stay involved, to run for office, and to stop saying that you can't, but to ask yourself and your family, how can I, how can we? And to use that passion and enthusiasm for Glen Allen and to continue to make it the place that we all want to continue to live and to play. There are several boards and commissions, including the Fourth of July Committee, and I would suggest that you tell our almost Village President McGinley that you're ready to serve. This isn't about an issue, it's about our village. And just another little shout-out to our almost Village President McGinley, I just want to remind everyone that women make up approximately 56% of the electorate, and in two years, I would hope that she's still not sitting up there all by herself. And again, thank you for allowing me to serve you.[1418.01][1418.01](applause).
Well, you're not an outgoing board member. Would you like to be trusted?
I would, as the senior-
Peter's the furthest thing from an outgoing. If there was an alternative definition, it would be-
That's why this is apropos, but again, as the senior trustee, I wanted to get a few gifts for our outgoing board members, the simplest of which was for Dean.
Oh.
A trip to Glen Allen, a trip to trying to keep our local businesses, our local shops in business, but-
I'd share these, but I won't.
A trip to our local sweet shop, found the Clark bars on the board, I mean, on display, but Dean, I wanted to thank you for all of your efforts on the Board, you know, as a man of integrity and dedication and a true volunteer for our village. So thank you for that. It was much harder to try to find something with the word "O'Shea" on it, but my wife found this stuff that says "Coco Shee."[1496.83][1496.83](laughter). While I recommend not to eat that, it's at least a token-
It's the cocoa.
Exactly. So it's at least a token of my appreciation for the time.
Thank you. My daughter and wife will like it.
Exactly. And last but not least, for our outgoing fearless leader.
How do you get this stuff up?
At first, I was thinking that I would get a pair of binoculars so that he could look back at everything, and then I thought maybe a rearview mirror, and I thought, that's not Alex. What's more apropos is he's going to relax a little bit, which is what this stuff is for. Maybe even wear his new visor.[1542.83][1542.83](laughter). When he's out shopping at the local grocery store, but-
Thanks for the humility of leaving. Pictures that will-
I know for certain that President Demos, soon-to-be ex-Mayor Demos, will certainly stay involved as he has since he and I were kids in Glen Allen. So again, thank you for all of your service, Tim, Dean, and Alex, and it was a pleasure to serve with you, so.
Thanks, Dean. Thank you. Just a quick mention, a friend of mine that has recently retired, and I are going on a bit of a walking vacation in Hawaii in a few weeks, so it'll be nice to be able to schedule a vacation for more than a week with leaving Village Office. So thank you very much, Dean. And I appreciate the pictures that will last indefinitely.
I spared no expense at the dollar store, so-
Thank you.
Is a walk to the beach considered a walking vacation?
Yes. Dean, would you-
This is going to be much easier than I thought, since Elliot took about half of what I had to say. I think we ought to consider reading him in a little bit. I don't want to talk about what I've done, but rather what the group has done over the years. I'm very proud of two things in particular. That's the fact that we've gone through rather extensive upgrades for the fire department and building a new police station. When I came on, I made, I think I made it clear that I was a public safety advocate, and I was going to do that the entire four years. Interestingly enough, the salt storage facility's been mentioned a couple of times, and we've actually resolved that within the last week, two weeks.
Thanks for helping.
I did a lot, didn't I? That was thanks to the county in particular. We've also taken on a sister city of Le Bousquet, France, which I had to remind myself over and over again, the name, because we've been to a place that has a similar sounding name, and I knew I was going to blow it if I didn't write it down. We've rejuvenated and renewed the relationship with the College of DuPage in the past year, which I think is a spectacular thing for us. We mentioned earlier in the evening, holding the village property tax percentage level, and the annexations to the village have been rather substantial as well. On a personal note, I want to extend a personal thanks to the Village of Glen Allen, Village of Lombard, and the GWA staff for things that they've done for my family over the past several years. I can't name everybody, but I really think it's important for everyone to realize what an incredible staff we have here. Every department has good people in it. They are friendly people, they know their jobs well, and I think they're under-recognized by most of us. So to all the staff, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Shea.
Sure. Well, as Catherine said, four years was long and short. I'm not going to, I had a lot to say about the police station, COD, the Village Links transition, which was been, it's been, it's been great for the village. I mean, it was really an unnerving time to approve those bonds, build that facility, but I think we're going to reap the benefits of that for years to come, and we have to remember that that's really their stormwater retention facility that's providing a great value to the residents, at no tax dollars from the residents. It's fully self-sustaining and operating on its own, and we hope that that will continue and they'll be able to provide even better value and better facilities there over the years. years. The Taylor Street Underpass was also another big, big one that we hope to have done by this spring, but unfortunately, we have to wait another year due to some bureaucracy and red tape and some little weed plant that we had to make sure we couldn't pull before the EPA came and gave us approval. So, that's been all the good things. The budget was also, I think, great. We came in, and I was confused, this whole levy thing and how it worked, the timing, and that we're approving a tax levy before we have a budget, and it doesn't make sense. How can we ask for money from the residents before we know we're going to spend it? So, in the first 18 months, staff put up an incredible amount of time, changing that, certainly Christina Coyle did a great job with that. So, that was, I think, a great undertaking that you, as new board members, will definitely reap the benefits of when you take these chairs. You know, unfortunately, we missed a couple of things that, you know, not due to us, but we hope to see more economic development. That was one thing that this board really focused on, and a couple sites that I think the next board should have hopefully some good opportunity to work with developers and get those properties on the tax rolls and making downtown Glenellen and Roosevelt Road and Five Corners all more viable destinations for our residents and guests. State of Glenellen, you know, the gas station, as Catherine said, it's been, it's been a tough month. You know, the opposition is great, and they were very helpful in a lot of ways, making the project better for everybody, and I hope that continues. But, you know, I think there's just a real danger and fear of change in Glenellen, and we saw it with some, some things. I think the first Machesney development, not Machesney, Geishy development that came in, there was a lot of opposition of a parking garage and emissions and, you know, the kids and, you know, there's just a fear. And I'm not saying it's not warranted and undue, but we have to, I think, start welcoming that a little bit more in this town. We have to, we have to understand that the trustees and staff are not here to gain personally from anything. They're here to make Glenellen better, and not just financially, but also aesthetically, and make it a better place to live, keep our property values high, and do everything they can to just make this the great town it is. And with that, the polarization, I think, we're seeing between, you know, good and bad, right and wrong. It's just, it's getting crazy, the social media aspect of it being brought in and the myth-truths and where people don't understand how government works and making comments that just are totally off-key and off-basis, and then having others comment on that and agree with them, and then it just builds, it's like a snowball, and it just goes, just goes awry. I mean, things about the fire station, you know, people saying, they're raising all this money to, for what? They have no plans. It's like, we have plans. We have a million dollars' worth of improvements at one station. We know another station has even more improvements needed. And people don't understand that anything that the board does is thoughtfully thought out by staff first, the village manager Franz and the staff, and then brought to us, and we are basically to oversee and make decisions together with staff to see what's good and bad in town. So, we have to let some of these things go. We can't let the perfect get in the way of the good. It was one of my quotes the first time I took this seat. But I think we do, and it's just, it's kind of disappointing, to be honest. Downtown developments, I've seen a lot of things about empty storefronts. They're going to get filled. You know, that's not the village's role. We don't own the properties. We don't set the reds. The economic development, I think, is in the right place. I think it's going, it's going to get better. And again, we need to help the village fill those spaces. I think they're doing a good job, and the development that we're talking about, Machesney and Geishy, that's only going to help drive more development to town and more, more shops, more restaurants. It's a challenging time. Retail is not strong anywhere, and people think that we can just fill up downtown Glenellen with every store imaginable. It just doesn't happen. People are shopping online. People aren't bringing shops, and we have to be creative. So, the new board, I think, is in a great position to continue that and push that as a key priority for, for this town. Lastly, I think, you know, I always like to leave someplace better than when I found it, I think. We are, as a board. Great friends. Alex, you know, he worked tirelessly, more than you guys could ever imagine. He's, he's really a viable and strong, strong leader. Trustee Clerk, I'll miss my ride home, you know, after meetings. Staff, you know, I will mention the staff, because I think they're important. You know, Mark Franz, village manager, Al, assistant, Greg Matthews, village attorney, Christina Coyle, finance chief, Norton, Deputy Chief Holmer, and Deputy Chief Acton, working on the police station's been, been really fun and exciting, and we look forward to seeing that, and I think, hopefully, the residents will be able to see both. And when you do, I think you'll realize why it was needed, even though people say it wasn't needed. You'll, you'll go downstairs and you'll be astonished at how, how bad the working conditions have been for these policemen for the last 20, 30, 40 years, whatever it's been that they've been in this spot. So, we're excited about that. Stacy Huesberg, planning, Meredith Hannah, in economic development, Julius, Dave Buckley, and Public Works, and can't forget Bob Minix per se, because, per se, he was, he was always here every Monday night. He's retired now, but, you know, still working with us. And then at the Village Links, Jeff Vesovic, Chris Pekerek, Nola Helen, Mike Campbell, keeping things running there. It's been great. And then all of these people have great staffs, you know, that are there and helping, helping all of us make this town better. Lastly, my wife, John, my two kids, Connor and Hannah, my mom, and my sister, for all support, and Dad will be home. Be tough, but it was fun. So, thank you.
Well, we're not going to let Diane speak about leaving as trustee, because we're all going to have plenty of time to listen to her for the next four years. She's, she's going to understand, and I'm, I'm going to just say a few words here. I think that the people that I served with here have laid out and talked about our agenda for the last four years, but I want to thank the residents for the privilege of serving you as village president. It was, it was one of the highest honors that I've ever been able to, to, that I've ever had bestowed upon me, and it's been a big responsibility, and I've tried to work as, as hard as I could and as often as I could to try to find the mean, to find what represents the community as a whole, speaking to people, talking to people, understanding that people that don't speak are, be represented, that we make the right decisions, not just for what's in front of us now, but what's in front of us for years to come. And, you know, again, I, I just, there, there's no way that I can say thank you for allowing me this opportunity over the last four years. Staff and trustee O'Shea just, there's, there's nothing that I could have done here or accomplished here without staff. There was unbelievable support. Everything that I asked for, I got the absolute right balance of pushback, opinion. In the end, when decisions were made, the staff is working tirelessly to support this board and to support the residents, and it can't happen without, we, we sit here and we create policy and we work with manager Franz to, to administrate those policies effectively as a board, and I, I am impressed. I, I think that the mandate, when I was brought on, was really to bring a business perspective to the Village of Glenellen, and things like adjusting the budget year, finding a viable resource for one of the best, the best values that this town or any town has ever seen in the volunteer fire department, supporting the police department. I've said this time and time again, Phil, that when there's a situation and we're all running in this direction, the police are running in the opposite direction to protect us, to serve us, and that facility was a, it was long coming, long overdue, and very, very well-deserved. I've made some incredible friends over the last four years in, in understanding the, the board that's remaining here and the newly-elected board and Diane. I'm, I'm as comfortable as I can be with the leadership moving forward. I, I expect a lot. I will expect that you will carry on and represent all members of the community, always remembering that there's 27,500 at minimum members of this community that deserve representation. Thought you are representing the mean of the community at all points, and, and it's tough. It's tough at times to let go of your personal opinions and make the decisions that you know are right for the community. I, it's going to be, I, I said last week that I haven't taken anything personally that's been said over the four years, but I've taken everything to heart, and it has really sunk into my heart, and I will pledge to be as available or unavailable as President McGinley would, would like me to be. I have had the great privilege of serving with past village president Greg Matthews, now his counsel. It's almost like bringing in a ringer. I've had the privilege of being sworn in by Judge Demling, former village president. I, I can't leave here with anything but wonderful thoughts and with my heart out, and, and I also want to thank Lisa and my family. It's been tough, although I think she's enjoyed her bachelorette and different things on Monday night, knowing that I wasn't going to be home. I'd walk in sometimes, and she's like, you're home already? Can I finish watching this? And, and it's been great. So, the point here is to say, I hope that I, you have all earned my respect. I, I tried to work tirelessly every day to earn your respect. Dean, you were, you were one of my mentors and one of the reasons that I chose to serve. I, I couldn't thank you more for the opportunity to serve with you. Trustee O'Shea, you're just an incredible man. You have always dedicated 100% of your heart to people, bringing people together, bringing the truth out, and I know that that's been difficult. And trustee Ladisack, I'll be talking to you in 20 years, I'm sure, here, and I want to thank you for the, the beach attire. Trustee Senic, motion. I keep hearing motion every time, every time I look at you, but your, your, your motion, your deliberations, how you look at something seven different ways has been an incredible asset. Trustee Senic, how you break down the, the questions fundamentally. Sometimes I'm like, I'm sort of waiting to the end so I can understand your conclusion, and then I benefit by, by what you've done and how you've done it. So, I've been, I've been very lucky. And Diane, I brought you back here because of what you, what you had to offer this village. I knew that it was the right thing to do to, it would give you the momentum going into the village presidency, and I want to thank you for your service, and thank you, everyone, for putting up with me for the last four years. So, thank you.
I think trustee Senic.
I don't really cheat that on you, Jim.
Go ahead.
I think John and I both would like an opportunity to pay our respects and say what an honor it's been. You know, if Alex has been the captain of the ship, Dean has been, in my mind, the rudder, because he has guided the board, much like a rudder where you, it's not so obvious. You've guided the board quietly, effectively, steered it gently back in the right direction. Anytime it started to list to the right side-
Flipping the whip is a name.
Yes, I can tell that. So, I thank you for that and for your wisdom, your guidance, everything that you've provided to both the residents and to me personally. Tim, Tim is like the kid in the class who knows the answer to the question before the teacher asks it. You know, you are able to distill an enormous amount of information, financial, and come up with the, the answer before I even know what the question is. You're going to leave a huge void in this board, and I hope some of the new trustees can fill it, because I know that I can't. Alex, your, the service you've done for our village truly will not be fully appreciated for years to come. You've served the village with a quiet and firm resolve, devoid of any self-interest, invigorated, I think, by a genuine love for the community that is inspiration to me personally, and I think to those that have worked with you. You talked about respect, and I think you've earned the respect of the staff, the residents, the other board members, because the first thing you did is you gave respect to everyone else. And it didn't matter who they were or where they came from or what their viewpoint was, whether you agreed or disagreed with them, you extended that level of respect, and in so doing, I think that you've reaped the benefits of that. And your legacy, I think, is one of inclusiveness, transparency, unity, fiscal responsibility certainly, but more important, integrity and just fundamental decency. You know, you've been more than a village president or mayor or whatever. You've been an ambassador for the village, counselor for many on the staff, and a true statesman. So, for Tim, Dean, Alex, I am a better trustee for having served with you, but I'm also a better person for having known you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think pretty much everything has been said about you guys, so maybe I'll talk a little bit more about, you know, you guys yourselves, I guess. You know, Tim, I think, first time I met you, I stood next to you, and I said, man, this guy is a giant. I mean, you are just a giant, you're just a big guy. I was just like, oh, my goodness. And when I think of you on the board, I think that's a good title for you. You are a giant. You're, you, you really are conscientious about your decisions in a giant way. You really think through them, and you, 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 your mind works them, and I think that that really describes the way you approach things. Your financial operations and the way you, you look at things has helped me look at things from a financial operations perspective, and you're our technology man. You're the guy that's on the iPad, opening up, closing, Googling, looking at things. So, the way I look at it, you're really the millennial guy on this board, as most of us here are not, that technology-enabled when it comes to our packets. So, it was, it was a pleasure working with you and meeting, meeting you. Dean, you two, in my mind, are giants, just because you are a big guy as well, in a, in a nice way, guys. But you're really, you're, you're a giant in terms of your experience, and I don't mean just your age, buddy, okay? But really around your, your wisdom, the wisdom that you bring to the table, the integrity that you have, and the calmness that you bring to the board. Those are always important. Trustee Senic, who I am also, apparently, is to talk to you in terms of a rudder, and that's, that's your calmness. You really, you, you keep, you keep it calm and you, and you keep us going. So, thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I think you and I are one of the few that have done two boards from education to here, and I think a lot of what we do on those boards applies to what we do here. Thank you for being a part of the team. And then Alex, just as well, I didn't really know Alex that well, but I sort of fell in love the first, first night we went out, and he ordered a pepper, because he is a hot pepper, hot food, spicy guy, and so am I, and I was like, I can get along with this guy. The first thing he did is sat down and ordered jalapeno pepper. Then we had the discussion of pickled versus fresh. Then we went to the ghost pepper, then Seven on Heaven with the hot as a mother, and from there, it was just love at first sight. So, it's been a pleasure getting to know you. You know, we can talk about, obviously, your business acumen and your, you know, your, your focus on infrastructure and getting things done that haven't been done in the village, but at the end of the day, which you've been to this team and the village as a leader, you've had a vision, and you executed that vision. And you don't always see that in people, and I think that that is probably one of the best qualities that, that you have provided the village, is really your leadership. I wish you had given me more opportunities to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, but maybe Diane will do something about that. Thank you all for serving, and hopefully, we'll run into you guys often in the village, and we'll continue to collaborate. Thank you.
Motion. The residents being sworn into office of library trustee, village president, village trustee, and village clerk this evening were officially elected for a four-year term of office in the consolidated election of April 4th, 2017. In addition, all board members will be sworn in by the honorable Judge Demling. Judge Demling, if I, we could please have the library trustees, Shannon- Judge Demling, if we could please have the library trustees, Shannon Burgish, Diana Dee Dee Foth, Andre Wright, please step up to be sworn in.
If I can have folks all step up in my order. There we go. If I can hear you raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Shannon Burgish.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge...
Faithfully discharge.
My office of library trustee.
My office of library trustee.
Congratulations.[641.38][641.38](APPLAUSE).
The next will be the administration of the oath of office to the new village trustees, William Enright, Gary Fasulis, and Craig Pride.
Some guys are more age-appropriate to me. As many of you know, Gary and I served together on the village board. I've known Craig for many years. I met Bill this evening. There was another William Enright who was a minister in town, and I asked if there was any relation. He said, "No." And I said, "It was probably a good thing, because the last time I played golf with him, I probably said some things. I wasn't playing too well." And I found out after he was a minister, so I'm glad it wasn't a relation. So if I could have the three of you raise your right hands and repeat after me. State I, and state your name.
I, Eric Pride.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And faithfully discharge...
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[734.20][734.20](APPLAUSE).
If I want to have the girls on one side and want to have Dad on the other.
All right, if I could have you raise your right hand, please. State I, Diane McGinley.
I, Diane McGinley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge.
The office of village president.
The office of village president.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.[762.32][762.32](APPLAUSE).
One more, one more. Come on now. It's going to happen all by you.
Please sit down for a minute.
Hey, you're not president, Marty. You were...
We are, as my last...
You're not a trustee either.
We're going to take a two-minute break while we reseat the new board, so thank you for the break.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
The next will be the administration of the oath of office to new village president, Diane McGinley, and I think her family is going to step up with her during the swearing-in.
If I want to have the girls on one side and want to have Dad on the other. All right, if I could have you raise your right hand, please. State aye, Diane McGinley.
Aye, Diane McGinley.
Du solis, swear.
Du solis, swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I'll support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The office of village president.
The office of village president.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Come on now. It's gonna happen all out here. Be sitting down for that. Okay.
Hey, you're not president, Mark. You're a...
We are, as my last, future last year. We're going to take a two-minute break while we, while we reseat the new board, so thank you for on break.